Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for coming out tonight to the -- this is the fifth public session of the Board of Commissioners have for township. Tonight is Monday, March 6, 2017, and would you please take your roll call?
Mr. DiMillo.
Here.
Mr. McCloskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
President.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holmes is not here. Mr. McGarrett.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Oliva.
President.
And Mr. Connell.
Here. Everyone, if you could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief?
Pledge of Allegiance to apply in the United States of America to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First up this evening, we have a lot of presentations. The first one up this evening is the Investment Advisors Update. Mrs. Cutterson, do you want to lead off, please?
Sure. Tonight, we have two of our investment managers here with us to give a brief overview of their 2016 performance. We have Mike Glack and I have INR Advisors in Media and John Spagnola of PFM in Philadelphia. I've also given you a hard copy just of the summary of the performance. That's in front of you. You were emailed the entire report, I believe, late last week, but this is just the highlights in case John or Mike touch on them during their presentation. And they'll be brief, so again, it's just overview, but there would be time for questions afterwards.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to work off the short form sheet that hopefully you have in front of you. Mike and I are here to discuss the pension results for last year for the Police and Non-Uniform Funds, so you should have a sheet that says page 2.1. But let me just start very briefly. Last year, there was a lot of volatility in the capital markets. We started the year with equities off about 12% for a variety of reasons. We had some uncertainty mid-year with Brexit and the British leaving the European Economic Union, and then, of course, there was uncertainty leading into the presidential election, which culminated in the election of Donald Trump, and then the markets kind of took off after that. So at the end of the year, equities ended up about 12%, so there's a 24% swing from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, and that's pretty common with equity investing. International equities were up slightly. Bonds did well through most of the year and then sold off on the anticipation of faster growth and the Federal Reserve tightening interest rates, which we expect them to do next week when they meet in the Federal Open Market Committee. So against that backdrop, I'll go to performance. So as you look at 2016, the overall return for the Police Pension Fund was 7.13%. INR manages half. We manage half roughly. INR came in at 7.66 for the year, beat their benchmark at 6.35. We also beat the benchmark at 6.75 versus 6.35, but didn't perform to the level that INR did. So a little bit below the actuarial assumption of 8%. If you look out, you know, five years or so, it's right up against that 8% actuarial assumption. So again, it's continuing to sort of chip away at that number over a long-term basis. Calendar year performance follows that. You can see '15 was a difficult year. That's on the following page, followed by '14. I won't go through each of the calendar year returns. Page 2.3 is the INR portfolio. I'll let Mike speak to that momentarily. Page 2.4, 2.4, is the PFM lineup of managers. So we pretty much index almost 100% domestic equity. We use T-Gro Price as a dividend fund, but other than that, everything's indexed. Indexing really in domestic equities has outperformed most active managers over any period of time, so it keeps costs low and it captures what the market offers. Internationally, we tend to be more active. You can see the returns from 2016 were kind of in the fours and fives, so we had some outperformance there. We have some money in REITs that net returned eight and a half percent for the year, and then fixed income. All the managers outperformed their benchmarks, and we believe in an active approach in fixed income because it's an efficient market. So that kind of summarizes overall performance and what our lineup is. On page 3.1 is the Non-Uniform Plan. Return for the year again, 7.15 versus the target policy index is 6.35, so outperformance of .8%. INR came in at 7.65. We came in at 6.75. Again, similar story to the Police Plan. And the lineup of managers and underlying funds that both of us use is the same for the Police and Non-Uniform Funds. So that's just a brief summary of results. If you have any questions or comments, I can tell you that through the end of February, our portion of the portfolio is up 3.6%. It's right at the benchmark, so it's a very good start to 2017, and I could go into a million permutations of what might happen this year as we try to unfold economic conditions, fiscal policy, monetary policy, tweets, and all the other things that go along with that as well. But I don't think in the interest of time, you may want to follow me down all those rabbit holes, but happy to answer any questions at this time if you have any. If not, I'll let Mike talk about INR briefly.
Gentlemen?
Yes. The benchmark that we use, is that a benchmark that you use, I assume, in other municipalities? Is that pretty much the standard benchmark that you're all kind of judged against?
That is correct. It's really basically a 60/40 mix of equities and fixed income. So the overall benchmark is broken out into 39% domestic equity. That's a Russell 3,000 benchmark, 21% international, and then 40% fixed income. So it is industry-standard benchmarks that we use for other municipalities as well. And most other municipalities return about in this range, at least our clients. We work with about 40 different Pennsylvania pension funds, both cities, townships, and boroughs.
And you feel that our asset allocation is appropriate?
I do. We review that annually, Andy, and think about other areas in which to invest. REITs are a piece that we put in and out of the portfolio over time, but REITs more recently tend to behave more like high-volatility stocks. If you see rates drop, go up. You see REIT prices go down because so much of the financing is contingent on variable loans and such. In our portfolios, we will put in -- hi. Good to see you. We try to be a little bit nuanced in terms of using high yield at certain times, and that's benefited the portfolio. High-yield bonds behave well. They behave more like equities than fixed income, so you capture the higher coupon. And if the economy does better, high-yield bonds actually do well because the chance of default thing for less investment-grade security is actually going to go down. So we use bank loans at times, corporate only. We'll layer in emerging market equity and take that out. And I think that's what you've entrusted both of us to do, to take a look at asset classes, what their relative values are, what the prospects are going forward, and that's as a discretionary manager, we're able to make changes and implement those rather quickly instead of trying to go to a committee and get approval and that kind of stuff. So our view going forward is we see better growth prospects right now than we did maybe six months ago, both domestically and globally. PMI numbers, production and industrial production have increased. We're seeing that in the Eurozone as well, so the prospects look better than they did. And I think that's why you're seeing the Fed going to make a move about -- if you go back about two months ago, the possibility of a Fed rate was below 50%. Now it's at 90% next week. So that portends an improving and a healthier economy. And there's a lot of tailwinds in the economy, quite honestly. There's $2 trillion of corporate assets that should be repatriated. I think they're going to work through that. There's the Dodd-Frank bill that could take the teeth out, some of the onerous parts of that bill that prevent community banks and other banking institutions from lending because it was designed to protect the too-big-to-fail part of the banking system and such. So we see, and we see some regulatory relief as well. So all of that, I think, has sort of created a little bit more, I won't call it euphoria, but certainly a positive, more positive environment in which to do business. That translates into earnings, prospects, growth, and also translates into a better PE ratio. So all of that, I think, is playing out well, and that's why you've seen, you know, good starts of the year so far.
Most importantly, how are the Eagles going to do this year?
They get a receiver. They get a line. They do this, corners.
They get a new team.
But I like, I like friends. I mean, I'd like the quarterback. Just coach him up and let him go. Exactly.
Thanks, John.
But don't hold me to that, please. All right. Mike, do you want to pop up? Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Mike Glack and President of INR Advisors, and we use an all-market approach, using all-indexed funds from Vanguard. Similar approach to PFM, however, a little different. Rather than using active management, we'll take advantage of some short-term tactical things that we see in the market. And what we use is an efficient frontier approach. What's the most efficient way to try to hit your assumed interest rate using the charge of 60/40 that we were given? And all the research that you use to calculate those expectations come from the historical returns of the indices. So we're basically using the investments that we're driving the research from, so we think it's extremely efficient. Not only is it really efficient, but John mentioned in three points where the market started as one of the worst Januaries in history, believe it or not, you benefited from that in really both approaches. The market went down in January. We rebalanced. So in essence, you had 60% equities that went down and your bond portfolio went up. But what we did is sold bonds high and bought stocks low and rebalanced. And if you remember as well, 2015, international stocks were the losing asset class. Large-cap value was the losing asset class in 2015. Well, in 2016, large-cap value was the winning asset class. So what you did without knowing it were investment guru shoppers by selling large-cap growth in 2015 and bringing it back to where we wanted it and buying large-cap value on sale. You did the same thing really with emerging markets through the total international marketplace. So where else you benefited from both strategies was the rebalancing of the accounts, certainly on our end. So we're up 7.66 and 7.65 for the year. Also, since inception, we've been 200, 200 points above the blended benchmark. So those tactical, tactical approaches that we've used have certainly worked well. If you look at fixed income, we looked at it in a slightly different way. Based on wage growth, we didn't think that interest rates were going to get out of hand in 2016, so we overweighted intermediate corporate bonds in the bond, on the bond market side, and that certainly played out tremendously for the overall performance. So really, rebalancing is counterintuitive with what your average retail investor wants to do. They get their quarterly 401K statement. They see that large-cap growth did great in 2015, and they move everything to that. Here, you actually did the opposite. You were always selling what was up, buying what was lower, and putting the portfolio, more importantly, back to where we wanted it. So overall, up 7.66 and 7.65 above the benchmark on both, on both sides. So if you take a look at what, if you saw the paper this weekend, Shapiro talking about eventually moving the state pension funds in an indexed approach. You guys have had the foresight to do that over years ago, since 2008. So you should be commended for being ahead of the curve, and if anything that you see in the research or in the paper certainly is pointing to an all, you know, an indexed passive approach. So with that, any questions?
What does Shapiro, I know, I know what he did in Montgomery County, but what's he trying to do statewide?
They just started to move some of the, if you take a look at what they're looking to do, if you look at P-Sers and Sers, what they're, what they're talking about is eventually moving to an all, to a more indexed passive approach versus an active management approach, more in line with what you guys are doing here. Just as John said, you have a core index approach. Majority of your assets are indexed.
Save on the fees.
Save on the fees, and when, 75% of the time, it's difficult for active managers to beat the index. And especially when the research that we're using, when you take a look at efficient frontier and projections and what do you really expect to get, which you're supposed to do now with Gatsby 67 and 68 as a municipality, you're supposed to take a look at the allocation and say, is there a real likelihood we're going to get to that assumed interest rate over time? All that research, the majority of it, comes from the indices and how they've done in the past, and then what you expect them to do in the future. So as soon as you limit and you use an active manager, that defendability and probability goes out the window, all right? So in this case, you're slightly above the benchmark using the benchmarks, so we're thrilled. Any questions?
Anything else? Gentlemen?
Appreciate the good results.
Well, thank you for your opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, gentlemen. Mrs. Cutterson, you have any follow-up to that? You're all right?
No, just that we're very pleased with both firms. They give the township very good service. They're helping us get or achieve our investment goals so we can get our funding levels up, which we have been able to do over the past several years as we've talked about in the past. We're almost at 80% funded in the civilian plan and almost 71% in the police plan, which is a big improvement from where we were not too long ago, so we're just going to keep on.
How does that compare to other municipalities? Is that?
It's not bad. We have a, every municipality is assigned a distress level in the Commonwealth. We're a one, which is very low risk level. There's still room for improvement. Obviously, the goal is to be 100% funded, but if you're 90 or above, I think that shows very, very strong financial management and good investment, so that's where we're trying to get to. But it takes time because there are big numbers to crack, so we're moving in that direction, though. Okay?
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming tonight. Greatly appreciate it.
You sure you don't want to stay? I'll watch it on TV. Sure.
Yeah, during the halftime.
Yeah.
Okay. Next is the Construction Manager Update, and Mrs. Woodup, if you want to introduce your, this is your bailiwick?
Yes. Ryan Brennan from Reynolds Construction is the Project Manager. Also in the audience is Tom Fraschudi from Reynolds Construction. He's the Construction Manager. He's the guy in the trailer every day. So Ryan's going to give you a report where the project stands right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. First, talk about cost. The contingency has stayed the same essentially. It's dropped about $1,000 from last month's report, showing a 41% exposure on the overall contingency at this moment. There's no change orders for approval at this time, just some items that are under negotiation. As for the progress of the, of the project, at last, last meeting, we discussed where they were at currently with the schedule. They have improved where they currently are with the game plan of completing the first floor for move-in, and I can see the first week of September and the entire building in the first week of December, following the police move-in, and then they would do the demo and the final site work in that area, which may extend a little bit beyond this early December, but by the end of the year, it'll look like to complete everything and get out of here. It was an improvement. They are looking at probably another two weeks of steelwork. They also have taken advantage of the good weather, so we placed about a third of the slab-on-grade because we didn't really get a winter, so there was no frost in there, so they were able to place the stone and get that poured, and they're going to follow out as the steel progresses. They've also poured some elevated slabs in some areas as well. The rough ends, deep underground within the building pad itself are all complete. There'll be some other work once the stone is down and the remainder following the steel, and there's some masonry work that has started and is continuing in the slab areas.
Well, that improved schedule, is there, can you estimate roughly how many days were shaved off?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? Yes. Okay. Great.
Working days, not counting the days.
Gentlemen? Nothing further. Thank you very much, Ryan. Chief, you timed that perfectly. The Police Department Crime Update, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the month of February, 239 parking tickets were issued, 331 traffic citations, 249 written warnings. We had burglary on February 16 on East Gulfview. Victims were away for two months. I think it may be somebody who was working on the house. Had 1,300 block of Steel Road, forced entry jewelry, and a small safe was taken on 218 in the Harford College, unlocked door, wrote credit cards and a laptop. We had a kidnapping. 1,200 block of Darby Road, it was apparent. Mother fled the country to Brazil, so it's a parental issue. We have a warrant out for the mother kidnapping of a minor child. This is not the first time this has occurred with this family, so it's, it's an ongoing investigation, and we have federal authorities obviously involved in it if she comes back into the country. Motor vehicle theft, Campbell Avenue, vehicle unlocked, keys in the vehicle. Suspect was arrested. 1,000 block of Steel Road unlocked, keys in the vehicle recovered in Willstown, PA. And in Moreland Avenue unlocked, keys in the vehicle recovered in Lower Merion. Once again, numerous, numerous car break-ins, and this is just for February, and I'll hold this for March already. We had eight vehicles broken into in the area of Campbell Avenue and Kathleen Court on February 1st. Then we had Chestnut Avenue, Tracy Terrace, Moreland, Crescent Hill, Fairland, Clearfield, for total 15 cars where we had thefts from the vehicles. We had nine attempted thefts from vehicles, Marthard Avenue, Campbell Avenue, Turnbull Avenue, Wynton, Murwood, Grove Place, Moreland Avenue, Winter Park Lane, Meadows, and that was a forced entry. So once again, it's a continual thing. It's not just Harford Township that suffered from this. The whole area, Delaware County, Bucks County, Montgomery County, everybody's getting whacked. We had an arrest from a car that was stolen last weekend to use from South Philadelphia with extensive arrest records. Obviously, once Philly grabbed these guys, but once we got ahold of them, nobody's talking, so they're dropped off out here. We have video from home cameras. We see them being dropped off, not particularly a group, but as a rule, the car follows them down the street, they just go up and down driveways, open car doors. So once again, I can't stress this enough. I say this every minute, I've been standing for a year. You've got to lock your cars. We've got to stop this somewhere along the line here. So arrests are being made, but you arrest two, four more show up, so it's just, it's easy pickings. People leave a lot of valuable stuff in their cars. We had a sex offense on Malburn Avenue. A victim was slapped in a box by a passing bicyclist, and we have nine K-9 usages with vehicle investigation, building searches, motor vehicle vehicle theft with a track that was arrested outside of township, accident leaving the scene, was in arrest on that, AOJ for Radnor for search warrant narcotics. My report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? So when we were talking earlier, every time that a lot of these cars that are stolen are, usually end up where someone is arrested, but as soon as--
Most of the time, yes. They, we do recover them, but either we make an arrest, somebody makes an arrest somewhere along the line, but, and we always, usually juveniles were in the cars, and once you make the arrest, you know, they don't know anything.
It's almost like you're not, you're not able to whittle down a gang.
Yeah.
It's just that no matter how many you make, someone else is coming at you.
It's not an organized gang. It's just word of mouth that they come out to the suburbs, and you can get laptops, iPads, and cash out of cars and credit cards. And a lot of times, you get credit card usage, you go out and use in the middle of the night, they'll do two or three quick shots and then discard the car. We have pictures on some of the credit card usages, but it doesn't go very far because nobody can identify them.
So all three vehicles that were stolen were, keys were left in the vehicle?
Correct, yes. A lot of times, it's a valet key. People think, oh, I have my keys in my pocketbook, but they leave the valet key in the glove compartment. So one of the first things these guys do is go in their glove box looking for any valuables and find keys in there, too. Or somebody leaves their pocketbook with their keys in the car.
So we have to change that mindset.
Well, we've been trying.
Lock it up.
I stand up every, every month, and we put it out as much as we can. People got to understand that, you know, it's, it's not the town we lived in 35 years ago. It's just way all over. We got to lock our houses and lock our cars.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Mario, you have some more?
No, no, that's it.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the, we have the ICE Rink Advisory Board Update. Mr. Noon? I see. Okay. Who's the chair? But okay, I'll defer. Thank you.
Good evening. Some handouts. If you'll pass those down. My name is Rich Caesar. I'm representing the ICE Board Committee for the evening. For the annual report for 2016, we're passing out some handouts. I'll just summarize this report and answer any questions, and you can always feel free to get in touch with us, and we encourage you to maybe attend an upcoming meeting, which is the third Tuesday of each month. It's March 21st this month. So as you know, the ICE Board meets once a month. There are nine members. Actually, we're one short right now, only running with eight members, and we've been, many of the people are here this evening also. We've been tasked with helping the ICE Rink discover new and grow, new possibilities and grow within the community and utilize it to the fullest extent that we can. All the members on this advisory committee are volunteers, and they do this because they have a passion for the stadium or they're attached to the stadium in some way. As you all know, the, the stadium is home to many programs organized and also public sessions. It's home to the Havford Hawks Ice Hockey Club, which is a traveling club. It's home to the School League, the Havford High Ice School Hockey Club, which is the high school varsity, junior varsity, middle school, and elementary school. St. Joe's University, Cardinal O'Hara, among others. Episcopal Academy as well. It also hosts a few men's league programs, shinny hockey, and what they call the old-man hockey league. It's also home to the Delaware County Skating Club, which is a member of the U.S. Figure Skating Association, and they hold events all during the course of the year. They have four main events. They assist in Havford Township Day, the Holly Berry Skate, the Winter Fest, and the Spring Fling. They also hold learn-to-skate programs, learn-to-play hockey programs, do private and semi-private lessons, and develop skills within the community. There's approximately 320 members that use the stadium from the Delaware County Skating Club as well. The stadium's also home to the Finland Exchange through the efforts of the Havford Hawks Travel Organization, whereby there's an exchange of players in a tournament every other year at the stadium and each of the following years in Finland. So that's participated every year for the past 16 years, it is. We also host other groups such as Special Olympics, the Main Line School, the Overbook School for the Blind, and Havford Township Adult School, among other programs, which are private clubs who rent the facility by themselves, private parties, and public skating. So the community gets a good bit of use out of the facility, even though it's only one ice surface. This year, this past year, in 2016, we've created a list of repairs that have been executed. We're also creating a list of repairs needed for 2017, 2018, and a five-year program going out. Some of the items that we have been corrected in 2016 are listed on your, your handout. Repairs have been made to the cooling tower. There's been an implementation of a point-of-sale system that tracks all the incoming revenue, gate sales, and programs that occur at the stadium, so it's good data that we have, and it's trackable information to know what works and what doesn't. They've also made repairs to the existing sound system, installed additional party lights, repaired some of the items in the girls' locker room, and did some targeted floor upgrades for the rubberized floor. This past year, the stadium has seen an increase in revenue, helped by many of their recreational services and organized programs that I just mentioned, and, and we've had a very good year as far as revenue is concerned. But we, we actually have some improvements that we need to do to the facility to keep it among the top facilities in the area and keep people coming back and command that high price that we have. And we do have one of the higher prices in the area, but we do turn a profit now. And we do have one of the higher prices in the area, but we do turn a profit now. So some of the capital improvements that we've liked, we would like to address in 2017, some of these are actually slated for the shutdown coming up in March and April. We do need to repair the Zamboni entrance door onto the rink. They will be melting the ice itself, doing some repairs to the floor and subfloor, repainting the concrete slab, and putting in new logos, and then refreezing the ice. That ice has been in place for about six years now, so it's, it's approached its life expectancy. We have to clean the rinkside boards on the inside, and that needs to be professionally done. The boards are relatively new, but we need to maintain that so, so we keep our investment in good standings. We also have to replace and repair some of the infrastructure. As you know, the building is, is getting to be a little bit old, so we have to repair and replace some of the electrical systems, breaker boxes in the main distribution panel. There's also a motor control that needs to be repaired or replaced. We, we'd like to suggest that we make improvements to the facility going forward in 2018, and we've also put on the 2018 agenda for a space utilization study. The space utilization study will tell us where we use our facility, where we can reconfigure our facility, and if additional improvements or repairs are needed to go forward and, and utilize the space better and more efficiently. And, and that would set the stage for any renovations we do in the future in 2019, 2020, and beyond. We look forward to any help that you can give us or any support that you can give us. We encourage you to get to one of the upcoming meetings that we have and, and see exactly what's going on. And I'd like to stress also that going forward with the stadium, we need to make some of these critical infrastructure repairs so that we, we make sure that the facility runs and, and runs continuously. If we do have to shut the facility down for any emergency repairs, we lose revenue. That's revenue we can't get back. So, so we, we encourage you to support the facility going forward and take a look at this list and see where we can spend our money wisely. Questions?
I, I don't have any questions. I just want to say that was impressive. One of the, one of the best advisory committee updates I have heard.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Would you say that the snack bar and restaurant there have helped the stadium a lot, or?
Absolutely. They do a very good business. They also have very good product there as well.
Yeah.
They're open during stadium hours and sometimes off-sadium hours. And you can go in by the side door. That was one of the best things that they did, made us, they did to the stadium was make a side entrance so you could frequent the snack bar without even going into the stadium. But it does draw people, and that was very good.
I've been there several times.
Yes.
Rich.
I'm sorry. I was just going to echo what Mario said. Very impressive presentation. And thank you to all the committee members for your service to the community. It's really appreciated. I was just curious as to your thoughts as to whether we have enough time allocated for community skating.
That's always a balancing act. There are a lot of programs that, that pay for specific ice times, and, and then the public sessions fit in between. They try and keep the public sessions somewhat regular and, and keep them the same either every week or every month. We try and fit in as much public session as possible, and, and they actually measure how well the public sessions do and, and trade off those public sessions if they're not doing well. So if you look at the amount of time that the public sessions are, over the course of a month, we'll say, if there's so many hours a month dedicated to public sessions, it doesn't fluctuate very much. There are added public sessions if something's canceled, or if there's holidays or inactive ice times, mainly during off-times of, of hockey in between figure skating sessions. Like when seasons close in between seasons, they'll institute more public sessions also.
Are they, are they meeting your, your budget projections in terms of revenues? Or, I mean, because I've been there a few times, and it seems like it's very crowded. I'm just curious as to whether it's-
It is crowded, and they do adjust accordingly. So when the public sessions are not crowded, they don't put them at the same time again.
Yeah.
So we try and maximize that, that time.
Thank you.
It's worth saying, just as you're talking about public sessions, just when they are. So maybe when we're finished with the questions, we can just remind the public when the sessions are. I've gotten up on the screen. Sorry, Steve.
All right. It is one of the better boards I've ever seen, and, you know, I've been to those meetings. You guys are great. Looking at, Rich, the 2016 repairs, didn't we repair the electrical box already?
Slated for repair during the shutdown. Yes, this year.
So Larry put that in the budget for this year. That's part of the repairs that are coming, right?
It's coming up in a few weeks.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that was, when I was attending your meetings there, that was critical, and I really felt that was critical as well, because if that went, then we were definitely closing. So I'm glad that's happening.
Yes.
I don't know if you can determine which of these capital improvements you think are more critical. I mean, the locker room's pretty bad.
The locker rooms are pretty rough, but you have to take care of the infrastructure first, keep the facility running open, so there's no critical shutdowns. We should probably sit down and prioritize this with maybe a few members of the, of the board here.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest. You have your meeting next week, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, I have, when's your meeting? Tuesday, right?
21st, correct.
Yeah, I have a fire board meeting.
Don't they meet with the four of you guys, the four commissioners of the-
Oh, we didn't know.
On the 21st or 22nd?
21st. I have to say you're right.
20th?
The 20th?
Is it 20th?
20th.
That's when the Ice Rink Board, Commissioner Board, will meet with the skating, the Ice Rink Advisory Board.
So we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it then and try to come up with a priority list. But, but you have here replace, upgrade the electrical infrastructure. That's what we're doing, though, right?
Correct. It's starting with the main distribution and one of the main electrical panels. And there's also a switch that needs to be replaced.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll get through, I mean, the emergency generator seems like something that's-
The emergency generator that we currently have is only for the emergency lighting. There's also plans to look at a transfer switch in the event that there is an emergency outage from the whole community, that we can just buckle up a generator and keep the facility up and running.
When you do the cleaning of the boards, the advertisements that are on there?
They'll come off, they'll be redone, they'll be shortened.
Okay.
Zamboni doesn't hit them on the way around, they'll be redone.
Okay. Great insight on that. And then the board also had the, had a couple concerns, I believe. There's movement on that?
Yes, there's, some of the-
When was the constru-, interfere with construction, I think with the side door? Okay.
Yes. There, there's an emergency exit, exit issue out, out the side, the new parking lot side where there's a drop-off that has to be addressed. That'll be addressed very soon. It's in discussions.
That's with construction, right. Okay. And then, okay. Anybody else on board?
I, I just wanted to ask him, the old man, old man hockey league, or the hockey players? Is that the one that's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 6:00 in the morning?
No. No, that's, that's shinny. That's-
That's really shinny.
I, I just wonder, because George, George invites me down, and I go down on Wednesdays to watch him skate.
I heard so.
And I'm waiting for Drew to come down and take my picture of me sitting in the seat there.
Larry, isn't that what you play, Larry?
I played shinny. I didn't play old man hockey.
No, we got to play against Jimmy.
I didn't think you were that bad at all.
My clock cleaned.
Larry, Jimmy, quiet.
Old man hockey's only once a week.
Yeah, when are they playing? Wednesday nights?
I believe it's Wednesday evenings.
I just wanted a note for the public, just so what the public sessions are currently at the stadium. Every weekday, Monday through Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. is a public session. Saturdays, Friday nights, in addition to the 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. public session, there's also a 7:00 to 8:30 in the evening public session. On Saturdays, they have two sessions, 1:45 to 3:15, and then 8:45 to 10:15. And then Sunday, and I think this is the most popular, public session, 12:15 to 1:45. Then the hockey clinic is from 1:55 to 2:55, and that's what I've been going to lately to get ready to go back to shinny. But the ice is, the, the facility's fantastic. I mean, the locker rooms could use help, but they're hockey locker rooms, and nobody has very high expectations of those. But as far as the changes of what we've done in the last 10 years at the stadium, it was, you know, there was, it was dicey there, and for a little while, there seemed to have been a critical mass of people on this board who weren't sure whether we should stay in the business of, of having a sheet of ice in Averton. I, I thank God that, that, you know, everybody got past that and realized, you know, what an extraordinary jewel that facility is. It's intensely popular. The hockey programs just get, you know, bigger and bigger, and, and it's a great facility. And towns that had facilities and lost them, they regret it. And people love skating at the stadium. Boards are fantastic, the glass is fantastic, the ice is spectacular. Even when it was like 65 degrees two weeks ago, it was, the ice was still terrific.
Mr. Segal, you had a-
Yeah, I just want to commend the board also on its minutes and the reports that it gives us monthly, or as you meet. They're, it's something I ask for from boards, and they're probably the best or as thorough as any board we have. So thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
I believe actually the board was doing the minutes, because I know Karen, you were very meticulous in your minutes. So you're doing now-
Barbara.
Barbara.
Okay, so Barbara, you were doing them, and Karen, were you doing it for a little while? Okay, because it-
Barbara's been on the wall all the time, and Adam just took it away. He's going to start, although he was supposed to sort of be his month, but he didn't show up for a few minutes. I'm in battle.
That's, that's a tough assignment to get rid, to get rid of, your secretary.
I hope he should share the wealth.
Yeah, good.
So there's six of you, seven of you, one, two, three, four, five, six of you here tonight out of eight. So that's, congratulations for getting all of you together on an off night. But thank you very, very much for all you do. In receiving a correspondence a couple weeks ago, I was a little disheartened, you know, of, of situations that might have transpired. And I am so thankful that you're there and moving forward and correcting things. It's a great facility, and you do a terrific job in advising the board and what has to be done. So thank you very much for everything you do for the community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Great job.
Good job. How come we don't clap for the advisors?
They did.
They're volunteer. The money-
They still had a couple. They still could have done a little bit better.
Could have been better.
They got paid, so.
Yeah, and we, and we pay them.
These guys aren't going to pay.
We pay them.
And they weren't, and they weren't really-
They would have kept our expectations.
They weren't killing the market either.
Okay, are there any-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Later. Are there any commissioner committee updates? Anybody wants to?
Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to ask the police advisory board if maybe we can get together this month with the chief.
Give us a date, Steve.
Uh.
Maybe we could do that later? Figure out the date?
Yeah, we'll do that later.
Let's do that later.
We'll do it later.
Okay.
What, is there a night better for you guys that are on the board?
We can do that later. Can we do that later?
No, I'm just asking if there's a night, you know, while everybody's together, is there a night?
Monday, Tuesday. Mondays and Tuesdays is best for me.
Okay, that was, we'll look at.
Okay, Township Solicitor update for the litter ordinance.
I believe a memo was circulated earlier today to all of the commissioners. I understand this issue might have arisen either at the last legislative session or the last work session where commissioners were inquiring about whether or not there was anything we could do ordinance-wise to limit distribution of leaflets or unwanted advertisement at people's homes. Our office did look into it. We provided you a brief memo on it. There is an ordinance amendment you could consider, which would, it would be really kind of akin to, I think you have, you have this on your solicitation ordinance, where homeowners could register their house as a do-not-distribute house, and you would maintain a do-not-distribute list, and we would require distributors of this literature to register on an annual basis with the township. And then if, if I am on, if I am a resident on your do-not-distribute list and I receive a solicitation, there would then be a mechanism where they could advise the code department that I've received something I shouldn't have, and we could hopefully issue a citation to the distributor of the information, something you guys could look at. Philadelphia has a program similar to this.
The, the resident would have to register each year.
The distributor would have to register each year to distribute, and the resident would just have to register once.
One time.
Right.
How do we identify?
Unless they want to get off that list, which I doubt, I doubt that would happen.
As far as if they were on the list and then they moved.
Then they'd have to re-register if they moved, because you'd be registering the property.
But there was no way of checking that, right? Like if somebody moves away, they're, they're going to stay on, that address is going to stay on that list until somebody calls up and says-
That's a good question, yeah. Enforcement-wise, that's a good question.
Unless we do that with our, you know, we get a new U N O.
They have a U N O for our transit.
Yeah, they get the U N O. We could delete them when they, when we got a U N O.
How do you identify the distributors? What's, Laurie, would you know how, how would we begin to do that?
The, the information on the bag, the red plum label is what they're hoping to use to identify them. But the, the purpose of registering these people is because some of them don't have the identification on them. We're asking, well, we're requiring them to register in order to, to use this program. That you register, so your bag would have to indicate that it came from you. You were the distributor of this. If you deposit materials at somebody's property that's on the, you know, do-not-solicet or whatever list, then, and that property owner notifies the township, sends us in the bag, tells us where they got it, when they got it, what the address was, and on what date, we'll notify that person and say you're in violation, please take corrective action, and you'll give so many notices before we take, you know, we go to a citation.
What do you do about the folks that throw-
I just want to say-
And Wexler's been, Mr. Wexler's ward at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock.
That's what this is for, the people who are throwing them out of cars.
How do we, how do we identify who they are, though? And they're not going to necessarily voluntarily-
The marketing company, the marketing company contact is on the bag.
Yeah.
So whoever, what about, so we can identify, if they're not registered, we'll find them?
There's a marketing company that solicits to Giant Acme Path Mark, and they combine those things in the plastic, and they're distributing. I mean, last week, with that wind, I drove through West Gate Hills and, and my area, it, that, those things were flying all over. We had those 50 mile an hour winds last Wednesday. Paper was all over.
Everything, it was terrible.
Township manager was out of town. I drove down his street, there was newspapers all over his front lawn.
It came right down the hill.
That was me. That was me.
I'll be honest with you, I honestly believe that, you know, these fellows do deliver, and these girls, they do deliver these papers, a lot of them, at nighttime.
Right.
And I don't know if you ever tried to find an address at nighttime, you know, but it's not the easiest thing in the world. Can't we just make them put rubber bands around it? I think that would be the, the better answer, and, you know, because they're not going to know these, you take 345 Strathmore Road. They can't see the address at, at 8:00 o'clock at night, 9:00 o'clock at night. So how do, how do they determine that? I mean, I'm just being fair, they deliver, in Connell's area, in my area, they deliver at nighttime.
In my area, too.
Yeah, most areas.
Most areas, you can't, you can't see-
So if you put the rubber band around it, that would-
You can't see the address.
I think that would be the answer to it.
Most houses, you can't see the address.
You can't see it.
But I did, who was it? It was either Dan or Dr. Levin that basically said they had called before to stop, not you, okay, it was Levin then.
We look alike.
No, they said that they called to stop the paper, and I did that. I'll be honest with you, and they did stop it immediately. And then later in life, I asked them to start it back up because of the coupons and things like that. They do give you a lot of different coupons and things like that. And I think that's a better answer, because they'll never be able to tell these addresses, to be honest with you.
Mr. Siegel?
As the, sort of the person who is the genesis of all of this, I'm familiar with the Philadelphia ordinance. It is not enforced. It hasn't been enforced in many years. It's an old ordinance. It even has stickers on people's doors. And when I lived in Center City, you know, you saw the flyers there. So that was the reason when I suggested the ordinance, that I didn't put something like that in, because it hadn't been effective in other places. In Philly, it's a lot easier to police, because there's no big lawns, at least in Center City. So that's my first concern. And the second is just sort of adding more, you know, we have the do-not-solicit list, which door-to-door, I think people find more offensive than flyers from CVS or supermarkets. So I think we have to balance those two things in terms of all of this. And that's why I did not suggest creating another registry. I think soliciting at doors, which we prohibit if people register, is far more intrusive than the flyers.
I'll agree with Dan. I think Dan's right on that.
Whoever's going to do anything, what about Jimmy's suggestion about requiring them to somehow bundle it?
Yeah, sticking rubber bands around it, doubling them and tripling them.
In a bag, or like you do with a newspaper?
Yeah, they put it right around the bag.
Do they come out of the bag?
Oh, they will come out of the bag at times.
They have to get wet, then they don't.
The other day, everything.
Recycling was everywhere.
They just get obliterated and...
I'm just not sure how you're going to regulate requiring a rubber band.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Siegel, on the downfalls to the registration and the, how many signs are we going to have that say, "Don't come to my property"? But question was asked, we provided an answer.
I do like the registration of the vendor, though, because it at least gives us and the police, somebody we know who's in the town and doing it, what companies are actually throwing the stuff. If we have a complaint, I think it's more likely, if you've ever seen these guys driving around, it's more likely they're going to hit an accident and take off a mirror of a car, because they're going down a street 25, 30 miles an hour to throw these things out.
Yeah, things coming out both windows.
Right, yeah. So it's, I mean, so I think it's good, you know, and if we're going to require them to register, at least we have some basis for them to be stopped if a violation occurs and something to check, at least. It gives our officers another tool, at least, to hold them accountable, you know. Do you have a registration?
I agree with you, Bill. I think having them register is a key.
Yeah, that would be...
It's a big key. I'll vote for that.
And then if we start getting complaints, like in your neighborhood, then we can contact the company in that neighborhood and work with them rather than make more regulation.
Well, there's got to be a little bit of teeth. I mean, I've done it for a couple of senior citizens that complain, and it's just not fair. I mean, you know, sometimes, I know there's a First Amendment, but a lot of times, people want to keep their property nice, and everybody likes to have their street look good. But we give more rights to the people who are throwing the stuff out of the car than we do our residents sometimes. So sometimes it just gets to be not fair. And as long as we at least have some little bit of tool, I know it's very difficult, as was just said, the police, it's going to be hard, but we have no tools right now. So we can't even tell our residents that we're trying. At least making the vendor register and hold them accountable and have a place to call, and then put some teeth in it. I mean, I think, I was told Springfield's got up to $1,000 fine if they keep throwing it on, you know, Mrs. Smith's lawn. First offense is 200 bucks, and it goes up to 1,000. I mean, one or two of those is all it's going to take for a company to get it under control. Because I can't believe it's a high-volume, high-dollar business. I mean, I don't fault the people that are throwing it. They're getting paid by volume. You know, they get 10,000 of these things to throw out, and a bunch of different communities are throwing them out there. But I don't think, I think our corporate responsible clients, like Giant, I don't think it behooves them to have their circulars all over our front lawns, especially in the rain.
There's the paper, and there's the rubber band. Okay?
Jimmy will demonstrate for us, the proper use of the rubber band.
There's pictures on the bag.
Isn't this the Inquirer?
Yeah, and if...
The problem is, half the time, like last Wednesday, it was rainy and windy, and most of that stuff ended up all over the street.
And if I may, one other thing.
I guess in my neighborhood, we don't have it on the streets.
The information we receive from the solicitor addressed all types of flyers, commercial, non-commercial, political. And with all due respect, I don't agree that we can regulate religious or political flyers. And even if our ordinance is content neutral, the information, and I did provide some to Mr. Byrne, and when you look at Supreme Court cases, it's commercial speech that's being regulated. And the ordinance that we had drafted addressed commercial speech, CVS or whomever, I'm not picking on CVS per se, and I don't think we can, nor would I support, regulation of religious, political flyer restrictions in any way. And the situations where the courts have addressed this are where the commercial speech has an alternative means, so that if they're not putting a flyer at the door, they can have it included in your newspaper or in the mail. I don't think those options are equally available for religious speech, political speech, et cetera. And so I respectfully do not fully agree with the advice of our solicitor, and I rarely say that.
Just a note, though, I mean, what we voted on last week does not include...
It's not in there, right?
Yeah, there's no registry in there or anything of that nature. So I don't know where, from a practical perspective, I don't know, are we suggesting that we're then going to change this language and start the process over, or are we going to continue to vote on what was...
It's not in there.
No.
No.
The ordinance does not include...
There's no reason to.
Yeah, well...
The ordinance does not...
What else do you feel about this first?
I think we're going to have to redo the ordinance.
The revisions that you see attached to your agenda are just the language changes that you wanted after the first reading.
And that they're not fully accurate. They alternatively should not have been included in paragraph A, because paragraph A is just a general paragraph. And when I made the suggested revisions, it, paragraph A, there's no context for the alternatively. It should have been as it was, and it was properly inserted into B and C, but it does not belong in A. This ordinance did not include, and I was the primary drafter, any kind of registry. I think if we amended it to include a registry, we'd probably have to either withdraw this and have a new reading, because I think that would be considered a substantial amendment that would require two readings.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so I'm trying to get some verification. So on A, we're just eliminating the word "alternatively," and we're just going to use the...
That line, that last sentence does not belong in paragraph A. It shouldn't have been inserted, because the first paragraph is, "You can't deposit this on any premises." And then B and C provide the types of distribution and how a resident prevents it. So there's nothing to have an alternative to in A, the way it had been drafted.
But there's no registration in here.
No, there never, I didn't...
Right, so if that's what we want, we need to, we need to, that's a substantial change in this ordinance.
And you need some teeth.
And you need to apply the teeth also, if that's what you want to do. So if that's the case, then we should be redoing this ordinance.
Well, the teeth are in the overall solicitation sections of our code. This is only one provision, and there's teeth elsewhere. So we don't need to put penalty provisions within this ordinance, because there are general penalty provisions for code violations. But if we were to put in a registry, that, I agree, that's what I said, has to be a substantial change. And we'd either have to table the original ordinance or, you know, but we'd have to...
What are the teeth, Laurie? Because to Bill's point, I might want to follow the Springfield model on this. So what would the teeth be currently?
Violations are a maximum of $1,000 in the cost of prosecution, and in default of one payment and fines of course, violator may be sentenced to county jail term of not more than 90 days.
Okay, that's...
Per diem.
That's per diem.
It's per diem.
Okay.
But they do have a number here, 1-800-540-0810. And they do have a number that says, you know, for inquiries, call, for delivery inquiries, call. So if you want to cancel this paper from coming, you can call that. And they will cancel it, like Dr. Levin said, and myself, I did it. And I did cancel it, and they stopped right away. Now, the problem is, if a lot of people cancel this at nighttime, I don't know how you're going to stop it, to be honest with you, but...
You can't do anything unless there's an ordinance.
I would suggest, I wouldn't hold up passing this ordinance for a second reading next week, and I would just do another ordinance that deals with registration, because there may be other people we want to be registered and stuff. But in the meanwhile, I still would like us to, as quickly as possible, enable people to put a sign in the yard that says, "Stop leaving the stuff in my yard." So there's nothing wrong with the previous ordinance. The extent we want to add to it, let's draft a new ordinance that adds, you know, registration. I'm sure other towns have done it, and, you know, we can copy it right out of their thing. But I wouldn't hold this up any longer. We've spent a shocking amount of time talking about this, about this ordinance for the last three meetings. And I would suggest, let's get it done, and then let's...
I agree.
Yeah, and then let's add a, you know, let's add a new amendment to the, because we're just amending the law as it is, do another amendment that adds registration. And then do it then.
I'm not a problem with that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, otherwise, we wouldn't be able to do it tomorrow, next Monday, because we'd have to add something that makes sense substantially.
I agree. Let's do it, then we can add to it. Yep.
Yes, indicated. Okay, anything further? Okay, also on the, on the agenda for next week is the animal control invisible fence. That's a second reading.
Put that down.
Police Department Restoration of Services Provider. That's the people come in...
Yep.
Into the fire?
Yes.
Okay. And also along those lines was the chapter for the code book, adding the provisions for restoration services. That's a second reading.
Yep. We're good with that.
Okay. Resolutions that will follow, our annual transfer of funds, which Mrs. Cutbertson does each year. Taking Peter to give Paul. Also, the resolution for the annual closure of Caricon Drive, which is April 23rd to November 5th this year.
That's a great, it really is, is nice.
From 7:00 a.m. to dusk. There will also be a resolution for Delaware County 2016 hazmat mitigation plan. Has everyone had an opportunity to read that over? Contract awards, Superior Plus Energy Services for heating oil and gasoline. And then Mr. Dunleavy will be here to discuss with us the, yep, the Community Development Block Grant Program, and that's for lead paint, right? And then the appointments. And we have two proclamations. Any questions?
No.
Concerns? There being none, I'll take a motion.
Motion, O'Jaree.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will convene here again next Monday at 7:00.